All right, welcome everyone to the town of Wakefield Board of Appeals Subcommittee Meeting for September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm going to read the call of the meeting. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view in or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number, one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, five, seven, seven, six, eight, zero, six, four, zero, five, Pasco, two, one, seven, nine, zero, one. Please use dial-in or or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disability Act, this location is accessible to people with disability. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodation, indoor language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renaud, town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight, as far as in advances of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make a reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier to you. So the agenda tonight, we only have one item, and it's case twenty-four, ten, zero, one, nineteen, one, twenty-seven, one, thirty-five, Nahant Street. With that for roll, Mr. Tarbell is here and myself representing the board. Mr. Renaud is the town engineer. He's here as well. Bill, when we get into this, this, I want to keep this pretty informal between Chip and us. Feel free to weigh in. Whenever you want. So with with that, I believe this development team has made some adjustments to the application that we've been reviewing over the last several months. And wanted to present some schemes tonight, understanding that this agreement to adjust the application was made on September fifth, so I know there's been a limited amount of time between the fifth and now. So we've asked them to at least try to put some sketches together or do the best they could to to make a presentation that made some sense tonight. With that, I think, Chip, unless you have something to say, I was going to turn it over to Mr. Panos.
No, I'm I'm with a full anticipation, waiting to hear what he has to say.
Okay, Mr. Panos, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and member Tarbell. My name for the record is Jason Panos, practicing law at two, four, six, Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. I'm joined by Scott Cameron from the Moore and Cameron Group and Stefano Bosso from SV Design. I'm actually going to limit my participation as most of what you're going to see tonight has been prepared by by Scott Cameron and his crew and reviewed by Stefano Bosso from SV Design. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Scott. And obviously through the chair, and feel free to interrupt with any questions as we go through the very rough presentation. Scott?
Scott and Stefano, you guys should be able to share, so feel feel free to call up your presentation.
Right. And and before they start, by the way, I just want to make it clear, you know, we we obviously feel we're we're here because we feel it's in the mutual interest, both the town and us, to try to seek a solution or resolution to this through the local permit process. I made that clear. And I think the board was generally in agreement back on September fifth, and we're putting our best foot forward in that regard here tonight and hopefully in the future. So with that, Scott.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you, Mr. Chair, member Tarbell and staff and everybody who came out. For the record, my name is Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group, civil engineer owner with the Moore located at sixty-six Elm Street in Danvers, Mass. And thanks for setting the table a little bit. It has been a pretty quick turnaround for us. So I've been able to put together a what I'll describe as kind of a massing study. You'll see, you know, can you, I'll pull up a concept for you, but what it is, is you'll see kind of my hand notes and sketch kind of behind more crisp kind of normal, normal line work that you see in plans. It is in color, but take it with a grain of salt. It is a sketch plan. It's this is the the spot usually where we start the the design work, so it's very fluid. And we're obviously changing quite a bit. We're trying to address some of the concerns that have been raised. I also want to note that Mr. Renaud has been very accommodating, and we've had a couple of engineer-to-engineer meetings over at his office to kind of vet this out a little bit. I won't speak for him. But on a technical basis, I, you know, we always want to make sure we're we're staying aligned. So I guess what I'll do, I'll bring this up. Zoom in a little bit here. So, you know, again, you can see it's kind of it's kind of part toony because this is a very early concept plan that we've been developing over the last couple of weeks since we last met with you guys. And what you're looking at is, you know, one of the, just going through some of the the bigger concerns, first and foremost, obviously, the the two, the two egress points, and I'll zoom in on the Haunt Street. So the the current plans have a one-way in on the left here and a two-directional entrance on the other side. And we, what I did is consolidated things along the frontage, so two-directional entrance. This would be more or less at the location of the existing driveway into the property. But what's nice about this way I have it is you can shift this in nine-foot increments left or right to optimize whatever sightline is most desirable from this this centralized location. You know, you know, from a traffic sightline perspective, this this, I believe, would help us achieve that that optimal sightline that that, you know, right now, we're meeting the we're meeting the requirements for sightlines, but this this bumps us up into the optimal, the optimal distances. So this is a big part of it, but what, you know, obviously, this translates all the way back to the site. So you can see kind of in gray behind this, this is where the current building is proposed on the plans. I've shifted that back quite a bit, seventy feet about deeper back into the lot. And the footprint is more or less the same. It's a little shorter along the frontage. You can kind of see, I'll just draw a line. Just kind of so you can see it. So we're kind of taking the width down quite a bit from here down to what you see. And as we come back, you still see this a similar shape which follows the shape of the property as it, you know, the property kind of comes in and and kind of doglegs to the plan left here. And similar with the overhang, it is pushed a little further back. We've eliminated the parking spaces in the back in favor of a wider aisle. You can see there's two ways, there's still a three-sixty circulation, which was one of the original way back, way back from one of the very early designs. Having access around all sides of the building was important. So this has actually been improved to a two-directional access all the way around. So that's a twenty-four-foot aisle. Every parking space here is ninety degrees. We still have a small amount of compact spaces in the back, but you can see we've we've reduced those even from eight down to six in this area, creating more green space area for pushing snow kind of in that back collection point. Snow storage was another topic raised. The stack spaces here are gone, allowing, you know, some open space opportunity in this portion of the property, just green space. There is a lot more green in this plan than what you have seen before. And I didn't highlight, I kind of left the areas that are, you know, known bedrock areas as white. That's that's about all you see. That's white. That's within the property. I'd move the solid waste outside the building with the two-directional. This should make it easier to service and access. So a truck can come in, pick up, there's still room to get a car around that truck if it needs to, but being relatively quick because it's outside the building. It can pick and exit back out through the front of the site. So we modified the solid waste pickup to alleviate that concern. The little kind of skew, and you can see the this this area here has been a focal point of board members where it kind of the current design had this this jog coming around the back here. So that's all been straightened out again, twenty-four feet. So we eliminated that. And then working with Stefano and and again, this is very conceptual. What he did is he he took the the older footprint in red and did a new kind of unit massing and kind of overlay the two with what you're looking at. And likely what we'd be doing is, you know, making the units a little bit more efficient, and that that translates to more not affordable units, but with less square footage, the rent rates would be down a little bit, a little bit more. Maybe a little different ratio of studios, ones and twos to optimize the floor plan. That's your, not your twenty-five percent affordable units, but these would be just more economical, economically sized apartments. And you can see the footprint change is quite a bit. This would still be the four stories on top of the garage. There's still the garage spaces. It'd be about fifty parking spaces under and around eighty on the surface. So your ratios are what they were, or maybe a little bit improved from what they were. We're targeting, you know, we've been targeting one point three-five parking spaces per unit. But with the slightly smaller unit sizes, that's going to further deter, you know, multiple cars. And of course, the parking can all be controlled with with your the rental agreements as far as how many vehicles are allowed on the premises by tenants. You know, no, we've, with this scheme, the the density does drop from a hundred down to ninety-two. So there's a density reduction here, which which addresses another concern. Obviously, it's been raised throughout the process with the with the amount of apartments here. Finally, I want to point out the pickup and drop-off is now more centralized. We have pull-off spaces on either side. So no matter which way you come in, you've got an area to pull off. These could be used for your your moving trucks temporarily, with people moving furniture in and out, your Uber pickups, Amazon deliveries, et cetera. We have not mapped out kind of what that interior ground level floor planning would look like, but you would expect in these areas to find, you know, your, you know, the the center of the house, I guess, your your kind of lobby type areas, you'd probably have areas, you know, you'd have your areas for your utility room. Somewhere up in here, you'd have areas for your, you know, your packages and pickup and things like that. So that 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 is to be determined. We haven't mapped that out yet. This is still very, very fresh. But, you know, on a conceptual basis, I think we've 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 done a lot to 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 address the major concerns that have been raised and keep the project within, you know, the confines of of the scope that the, you know, the applicant was was hoping to achieve. And from a utilitarian standpoint, this doesn't really move the needle much on any of the focal points with utilities. Your stormwater management system will effectively be the same as what we had. We'd have to update numbers, obviously, but there's a lot more green space with this concept. So our stormwater needs decrease a little bit. Everything would remain the same there. The building's set back a little bit further from the street, so we would have longer service runs into the buildings. Again, that's no issue at all. It's just a longer service run. You know, your hydrant would be further off the street. Instead of being at the street, it would be set back closer to the building to meet meet fire, fire suppression proximity requirements for hydrants. So, you know, again, we've put some thought into this. I have spoken with the the applicant about this, and, you know, as far as the first concept, I'll I'll leave it at that for now and see what your initial, you know, you know, your reactions, feedback, input are.
Hi, I'm happy to react. First of all, I like the positioning on the lot better. However, you know, I think one of the major things we talked about was density, size and number of units, and I'm not sure a reduction of eight units for me gets us there. You know, to me, when we left on September fifth, we were talking about a significant change in 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 density and numbers of units. And I'm not sure eight does it for me. However, I appreciate the effort that you've done. I wish we had seen this concept at the beginning, started working from here a hundred and eighty days ago or more, because this does pull it back over away from the road. And then we could have started just getting it to be more sizable and appropriate to the neighborhood. I don't think a five-story building here is at all appropriate for the neighborhood. You know, I was hoping, I can't tell you what I was hoping for, but it was more than eight units, I'll tell you that. But thank you for your efforts.
I agree. Agree with the concept that this conversation should have happened months ago, but here we are. Many of the safety issues, you've addressed some of them, and I appreciate the effort. But many of these safety issues were a result of the density and size of the building. Reducing eight units, I don't think is going to take away all the safety issues. The other portion of the the project that did, we felt didn't comply with forty B was the the size, and it didn't fit the context of the neighborhood. And we went over that in great detail on the fifth. And I hope you go back and look at the fifth, what we said about context on that day. So for me, I'm not sure this moves the needle as much as I appreciate an effort here. But you know, I'll turn it, you know, Bill, do you have anything that you want to say here?
Well, I mean, I think from from the traffic component and, you know, increasing the site distance was a big one for us at the TAC. A lot of the circulation stuff gets fixed. I'm a big fan of having the two-way traffic all the way around. I think that's important. So, you know, from that standpoint, I I like a lot of what I'm seeing. You know, obviously, the number of units and the potential for spillover number of parking spaces, that type of thing, you know, it's it's moving in the right direction, I would say, you know, kind of echoing what you folks are talking about. But obviously, the, you know, the number of units and en masse, that's kind of your area as opposed to mine. But, you know, the stormwater, for the most part, was already resolved. This only makes it even, you know, it's a greener site. The traffic stuff, I I think, you know, Scott's doing a good job addressing the the comments from the TAC. You know, obviously, we would get an updated, you know, stopping site distance stuff and all those types of things. But, you know, from my perspective, utilities and traffic, it's getting closer.
Okay, thank you. You know, I, you know, moving forward, you know, we we could present this to the board in the future. You know, Chip and I are just two members. But I think you've heard what we've said.
Well, Tom, let me, if I can interrupt for a second. We certainly could, but knowing the feeling of the, you know, this is a working group, and so we're supposed to work. And we can give you our opinion. However, we also know our board pretty well. And if Tom and I don't feel that eight units have hit the density fitting into the neighborhood concerns, then I'm pretty sure the board's not going to feel that way either. So what can we do on this number? What what can we take a floor off? Can we can we make a significant difference? You know, less than ten percent is not significant, in my opinion. So can there be movement? Can there be more movement in the number of units? I guess is what I'm asking. And I'm I'm just asking, right? Because you had to know that question was coming. So I don't know what your answer is to that.
You know.
Can I jump in?
Go ahead, Jason.
We, and I appreciate the comment. On September fifth, we did have a fairly extensive back and forth on this, and I I think my answer to the comment on density then, because I was fairly non-committal, you'll you'll recall on because, and the reason why I was non-committal, and I I believe I made this fairly clear, is that there may be ways to adjust the site while addressing some of the concerns the town identified as safety concerns. Whether we agree with them or not is beside the point. And I think that Scott and team accomplish that, certainly from a traffic and circulation point of view. I'm still not fully, I I I don't fully understand the density issue if it doesn't entirely relate to the so-called safety issues that the town identified and was concerned about.
Mr. Panos, I I believe in forty B, there are two two prongs, right? One prong is safety, and the other prong is fitting into a neighborhood. And a five-story, ninety-two-unit building does not fit into this neighborhood. There's nothing else around it. It it is much taller, much larger. And I'm not going to argue about the safety issues right now because I'm just talking about the prong that talks about fitting in to a neighborhood, fitting into a street that's as busy as Nahant Street and all of that. And I don't think you meet that yet. That's my humble opinion. And although you were non-committal, we were pretty committal to the word significant. Not trying to define what significant is, but a significant differential. And in my humble opinion, as we're trying to work through and get to something that we all can be in agreement on, I don't think you've met that. I haven't totally examined the the safety issues from the TAC standpoint. I certainly appreciate Mr. Renaud's comments that it's better, but he also is one member of the TAC, not like us, not the entire group. So I I really appreciate the time that he and Mr. Cameron have spent. But I don't think you've made significant difference in making this fit into the neighborhood. My opinion.
Maybe I could interject.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Yep. So well, firstly, the the applicant is is out of the country right now. We've been working remotely going through this. We are planning to meet on the twenty-ninth internally to go through this in a lot more detail. We we don't, we don't have authorization to go less than ninety-two in a conversation tonight. But I would like to, you know, further further the conversation, you know, on our side of the table especially. And I think, you know, I've heard, I've heard what I need to hear tonight from you guys. I appreciate that. And I, you know, I guess I was looking looking ahead at our our schedule. You know, see, we're we're working on our side. The applicant has authorized us to do so and authorized me and Stefano to do so. What would be Jason, maybe this, maybe you 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 know this as well, but what would be a schedule for a meeting on the twenty-nine thirtieth? You know, I can assure is going to, you know, we're going to change the density, but we're meeting, we're talking about it.
Are you talking about an internal meeting, Scott, or?
Yeah, yeah, internal, internal here, mainly because, you know, our our client is out of the country right now.
Yeah, and he won't be returning until the twenty-ninth, which is a Sunday.
So I'm just trying to look ahead at schedule, you know, see if there's anything else we can do and.
So so let me interject here. Our next meeting is Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. The extension was granted, I believe, to the following Friday. We're not calling another special meeting. So we're not, unless we have a letter extending the deadline, we're going to be taking a vote on the twenty-fifth. So that's in your court? We're willing to continue to meet? We're willing to discuss. This is why, you know, this is part of our, some of our frustrations, Scott. I know the the owners are out of the country now. We've been asking them to come to this meeting so we could have a back and forth here. No one's, we just want to have a dialogue, right? We've been asking since December. We'd like that dialogue to take place. So when when you do meet with this person and they come back from in the country, that's what needs to be said, but it'll be moved unless we have an extension. Because I can't allow this to go forward without that extension. We'll we'll take the vote on the twenty-fifth with no extension. Without an extension in hand, there'll be
And we're just presenting this, Tom, right?
Well, no, I'm with you. I I I would prefer rather not than present this on the twenty-fifth. They've heard what we've said. They've heard what the board has said. They could come on the twenty-fifth, but quite frankly, Mr. Panos, I think you'd be wasting money of your client, you know, bringing these people to the meeting because you know what you're going to hear, that the eight units isn't enough and that we need more input. You know, we have to kind of go back to the Traffic Advisory Committee. Some of these changes look good, right? You've you've improved the sightline, right? So, you know, you've done some work here, but we still have to go back to that committee. You know, absent that, you know, we can't make a decision. And it all takes time. So if
And from that point, if they if they do replace, continue to reduce the numbers significantly, then we need to see what that design looks like and how does it fit into the neighborhood and all of that. So we're we're not talking two weeks here. We're, in my humble opinion, Mr. Chair, Tom, I feel like this is our first working group meeting where we've made some significant changes, in all honesty. I I'm happy with what we saw, but this is the start, not the end, in my opinion.
So Traffic Advisory Committee is meeting on the fourth, if that helps anybody, just so you know what our next meeting is scheduled for. You know, and and I think just kind of rolling it in, I mean, I think the other comment that that the TAC had was just the the concern on spillover parking that's still out there. I think unit count obviously plays heavily in that. So just keep that in mind in our dialogue.
Yeah, I would agree. The easy way to take care of parking is to reduce units.
Well, if I could interject, I don't know that we're going to be ready to have a dialogue with the TAC on October fourth. I think that's somewhat aggressive. I I I agree with with the chair, but for slightly different reasons. I don't think this sketch is ready for prime time, and I would be, given what I know is the temperature of your board. I I remember we came out of a working group subcommittee meeting with some sketches and presented them to your board only to have our hat handed to us because they were sketches and they weren't of a level that the board or of a quality that the board wanted to see. So I would be really uncomfortable presenting this on Wednesday just because it looks like that.
So if I could, Jason, through the chair, this being a working session. TAC is ten-four. What is the next board meeting after that?
I was going to ask that.
We meet the second and the fourth. The eleventh and the twenty.
Oh, wait a minute. No, I'm sorry. It's on October ninth and twenty-third.
It's the ninth and twenty-third. Yeah.
Good. I can't get in trouble for having a meeting on my wedding anniversary. What I'm doing is I'm like, I'm programming out, you know, internal schedule here as you're with these dates. So I guess what I'd like to propose is that Wh- what I'd like to propose is that, you know, hopefully, uh, Jason, we can get, you know, uh, an extension for Wednesday. I I'd like to feel there's some progress here moving forward to get that. Um, I I agree, it doesn't make sense to go to the meeting on Wednesday. Um, and we look towards kind of end September to meet internally, perhaps have another meeting. Uh, with Bill, uh, Bill and I, just on technical, if warranted. Uh, I don't, I don't know if I necessarily want to rule out a T A C. I don't know if we can have an informal such as this with the T A C. Um, uh, because that gives us another week and a half or so to prepare. So I'd like to maybe put an asterisk on that, Jason.
And keep in mind, Scott Thornton has barely seen this, however. From a, from a T A C stand, from a traffic consultant standpoint. Um. He he said, uh, he basically echoed with what Scott said, uh, which is that. Uh, we would come closer to, if not me, if not exceed that. Uh, S S D stopping line site, site distance that the town is looking for this project to comply with.
Inter- intersection site distance is what we've been asking for. Intersection, not stopping site distance.
Right, I'm sorry. So he he did mention that, uh, that would be greatly improved by this, this, um. This revised plan. Uh, let's talk extension. So we're currently out to the fourth. Um. But if we went out to the. I know you guys don't want to have extensions run concurrent with your meetings. Um.
And I I, not just with our meetings, with the opportunity for seventy, a seventy-two-hour public meeting notice. So if you're willing to extend beyond the twenty-third, you should be looking at the end of the following week.
I mean, I'm, Tom, I'm hoping that we could, if they're meeting with their owner or the developer or whoever they're meeting with who's out of country. On the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and get some more wiggle room or direction from them. That we could have another working meeting before anything would be presented back to the board. That would be my.
I'm fine with that, I I'm fine with that, but given, you know, we've.
That's why I'm saying, just look at the calendar for that to happen with our meeting. I mean, I. I think we're looking too close-minded in these extensions. Right? I think we should extend three months, and then if it doesn't take that long, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I use, I use three months as a, as as a throwout, I, you know, call it whatever you want. But where, when we keep looking at day-by-day possible meeting, that doesn't give us time to work on this. Right? I I, I feel like we're always being constrained by when the next meeting can happen.
I totally hear you, Chip. If I may ask you to hold that thought. Um. Because I'm I'm, if we can make progress and headway on this, then sure, I'm I'm totally with you. Uh, personally, I I I don't have the authority from the, from the ownership to to agree with you on that, but.
Okay, but I'm just telling you where I'm coming from. If it ends quicker than that, great. If it doesn't, well, then we've got it.
I totally appreciate it, and and I I really do, and speaking personally, I would be on the same page with you. Again, if it looked like we were making headway on this, and I would feel, I'll even go a step further, I would feel comfortable recommending. To ownership that we, uh, that we, that we engage in that kind of approach. I'm not there yet only because I don't have the authority. Um, so what I'm recommending to allow for, you wanted another potential working group meeting. I'm unfortunately conflicted on the seventh of October. What's the fourteenth? The fourteenth is a holiday. Um.
Doesn't have to be Monday night.
That mean we can't have meetings?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can be available, we can be flexible on that.
Yeah.
I can anyways.
If you can be flexible, uh, I think Tom indicated that it doesn't have to be on a Monday night. That'd be great.
No, it could be on a Tuesday night or.
Okay. Uh, that's fine. Um, so for the time being. Noting that, please hold the thought of further more, uh, uh, you know, longer extensions. Um, how about we go out? Does the eighteenth give us enough time to have those preliminary discussions?
Well, I I'm I'm laser-focused on our regularly scheduled meetings. And if.
The eleventh and the.
I I I I would strongly suggest you do it to the thirty-first of October. And if you, if you go back and talk to your owner and he says ninety-two is it, I'm not budging, then we don't got a hell of a lot to talk about anyway. So, you know, we can dispose of it before then, uh, and take our vote at the board. Um, but if this, if this person is willing to come and talk about what you've been hearing. Why not give ourselves the month? I don't want to, you know, because if we do the eighteenth. You know, what if we can't meet before then, and we're we're meeting on the ninth? It, you know, I don't know if we're going to get a meeting in before the ninth. That's. Two weeks and two days away.
Mm-hmm. How about?
I'm thinking. No, because it doesn't, we're meeting on the twenty-third. I need seventy-two hours after the twenty-third should something happen. So we got to go into that following week, which it would be, that's why I was suggesting the thirty-first. Or November first is the Friday.
Um.
That's a conservative approach, but it's just in case there's a blackout, there's some reason that we couldn't take a vote.
Tom, Chip, if you don't mind, I'd like to go offline with Scott for a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
Fine with me.
Okay.
Up to Tom.
Yeah, we're we're trying to figure this out, so go ahead.
I feel like we should have Jeopardy music playing or something.
I I heard that.
I disagree, I think that's a good idea. Well, I'll have to queue that up for the next one of these.
Exactly, uh. Mr. No, how come we, can we talk more about stormwater? I love our conversations about stormwater.
I'm happy to talk about stormwater. Major part of my day today.
What do you, what do you think of the whole culvert up at the high school? I think we've made great progress.
Very cool, yeah. No, very good stuff. It's um, it's going to be really good for a lot of the upstream folks.
Did you, did you actually look at how big those suckers are?
Yeah, we were involved in sizing it, so.
Well, I know you're involved in sizing it, but did you climb down into one of them? I stood in one of them. They're huge.
Yeah, yes. Yep, a lot of water, a lot of water coming down.
I was going to say, if we fill those with water, we're in trouble.
I think you'd be surprised during big, big.
I I probably would be, I probably would be, and hopefully it will help with upstream that.
Well, that's the intent, yeah. So we 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 still have major, major improvements to make upstream, but we're looking at grants and different things, so this.
Good.
That's the table for us to be able to go after all those grants. That's why, that's why we did it the way we did it, so.
Yeah, well, it worked and we fitted it between the old and the new, which is kind of amazing.
With six inches to spare, so that's.
Yeah, plenty of room.
Right? Hey, Chip, when is that construction supposed to come to an end on the high school?
January twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah. Well, they're going to move in over the holidays?
And that, that would be my hope. My hope is before that. I mean, we're nowhere able to to get any firm commitment on end date now. But we've got a lot more foundation in the ground before November than we thought we were going to have. The culvert work went quicker and better than we, we're just, everything is tracking very nicely now. Um, but until I get steel up and we start doing finishes, I I can't push for an earlier move-in date. But my, still in the back of my mind, and I keep joking slash commenting on it, I really want it to be. Two or three months before that, like right around the start of the school year.
Yeah, you're going to have trouble with that because look at what happened to Stonemire. A lot of these school projects. You know, the dash to the finish to get them ready for the beginning of the school year, they all got crushed. Because all their subs were at all these different sites and it was, it was pretty ugly.
That's why we're probably better off thinking about January. Um, because we won't get crushed with that, but but Stonemire had so many issues. Stonemire was a catastrophe from the beginning. They had to go back to the town and ask for more money. And they, they went out right at the height of COVID kind of, so all their numbers came back crazy. We were very conservative in what we asked the town for, and all our numbers so far have come back within budget or under. So, we're tracking really well, and and we just love work. I, you know, yeah, I'm I'm kind of an old-school boy, but. Bond seems to work really well with with Wakefield, and they know us, and they know, you know. Closing Hemlock Road kind of went smoothly, and between Bill's teams at the DPW, and it just. They seem to work well together, unlike up the road at the folk.
All right, they're back here, Chip, so let's.
Okay, all right, we'll get back to Nahon Street, not the high school.
Don't entangle us with the high school.
Ah, the good project, that's something to be entangled with.
Oh, okay, then, then.
It's going well.
Tie us in, tie us in. Um, so we think that, uh. October thirty-first is probably reasonable that we can convince our ownership team. I mean, my hands are tied because he's not here. Uh, but I I I think, I think your request is reasonable. And I think we can probably make a lot of headway by, in terms of, uh, discussions and how we, how we. Potentially chart a path forward. Um, you know, within that time, and and to your point, Tom, I know you were talking about a much, or Chip. You were talking about a much longer, uh, runway of of three months and things could end earlier, uh, within that time. Well, things could end earlier if there's a breakdown in discussion with a, with an October thirty-first deadline, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It certainly allows enough room for all sorts of things to happen, although we, again, I want to reiterate. I think it's in our mutual best interest to try to solve this on a local level. And uh, and that's, that's certainly what uh, what our main goal is.
All right, so what I would ask then is that we have that letter tomorrow. We need to have that letter in hand on the extension prior to our meeting on the Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. Just so we have some surety. And then I will talk to Chip and uh, Bill, um, about trying to find a a a next date. Um, how much time do you think you want, need to kind of take that next level of discussion with your owner? Well, you know, you don't even have to answer that tonight. Why don't you talk to your owner on, when they get back? Gather your thoughts and reach out. If Mr. Panos, if you would reach out to me directly, that's probably the quickest way to get this meeting done.
Sure. Are you talking about another subcommittee meeting?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Because we want to hear your owner's reaction to our, our stated desire to further reduce the project, right? All right. Uh, we agreed on a plan then. You'll have the letter in tomorrow. After you meet with your owner, you'll reach back out. We'll reach, we'll schedule the next subcommittee meeting.
Yep. Um.
Thanks for me.
And uh. Given where we are, are you taking public testimony or no?
No, not, we usually don't take public testimony at the subcommittee meetings. We've heard, um, nine months, I know where everybody stands.
Yeah.
Out of respect for everyone's time, I think, uh, we're going to forego public comment tonight. Um, I'm glad that they can see what's going on, and, you know, we're we're trying to be transparent about what's happening in the process here, so.
Sure.
So, so, uh.
We have him on, so I'd like to give him an opportunity through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Stefano, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
Nope, not, not for now.
Nice and pithy.
You get the night off, Stefano.
All right. Next time.
Yeah, and I'm sure they'll, we'll be happy to share our opinions with you. Um, all right, so. Chip, you good?
I'm good.
Bill, you good?
Yep, I'm good.
Mr. Panos, you have a a clear path of what we're, what the expectation is?
Yeah, well, eh. Is is clear as can be, let's put it that way.
As clear as mud.
As the song goes.
At least for next steps, you know, you don't have.
Yeah, for next steps. I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to be. Somewhat non-committal, not because I want to be, uh, I want to be evasive or otherwise contradictory. I don't. I just want to figure out. Uh, where we are with the site plan and and what it gets us, and how. Uh, how the details pan out, particularly with regard to the traffic and the site circulation. I'm not, this is, this is a sketch. And I need to understand it better, uh, a lot better. And, uh, I know that Scott and Stefano are working together and and will start layering with Scott Thornton, but. We don't even have enough to give him, um, so that he can start adjusting his, uh, traffic impact assessment, so, um. You know, there's, there's definitely some work to do, and in that, yeah, we have a, we have a somewhat clear path, but. You know, let's, let's. Let's, uh, put a TBD on the density. Is that fair?
Yep, but you know it's coming back up. Uh, with that, um, I think, yep. I think we're all set then. I appreciate for the neighbors. Thank you for joining, um. And, uh, thank you to, uh, your team, uh, for putting together some changes and taking our comments seriously, and, uh, we will be in touch.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, guys. Good night.